This time we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Schaefer is out of the room. Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Click is out of the room. Commissioner Osterhaus?
Here.
Commissioner Haskraft?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Chairman Ily.
Here. We do have a quorum present. There is no action item to be taken today, but is to receive information in regards to the appraisal process that's conducted in Johnson County. So I'll immediately turn it over to our appraiser, Mr. Welcome. Paul?
Thank you very much, sir. We have about a 45 to 50 minute presentation that, so if we can hold the questions until the end, we'll be happy to answer them, if that's okay with the chairman.
All right, that's fine.
Okay. We'll go ahead and start with the, well, let's introduce the table. I'm Paul Welcome, county appraiser.
Scott Porter, the commercial real estate manager.
I'm Jeff Ramsey, residential valuation manager. I'm sorry.
Jennifer Thompson, executive assistant.
Shayna Kazner, tax abatement administrator.
Jeff Oldsapple, assistant county appraiser.
All right, if you're going to speak into the microphone, you probably need it to be a little closer, but that's fine for the introductions.
Thank you very much. We're going to start off with a video that we have on our website to kind of explain what the county appraiser does. It's about a four or five minute video, so if we would be able to start.
So there's a lot of misunderstanding about the role of appraisers and how the death of property tax that homeowners pay. When someone hears the term "appraiser," they seem to think of a Sierra Digger reaching for their lawn. Not so. Appraisers don't set tax rates. Appraisers don't chase tax dollars. An appraiser is interested in fairly determining property values, and they take great pride in it. Property tax is determined by a simple formula. Appraisers only affect one of these variables, the value, and they do so with incredible accuracy. Appraisers aren't tax collectors or even tax setters. They're just fellow taxpayers, and their primary goal is to make everything fair and equitable. Imagine that you are in a restaurant with two friends. One orders a hot dog, one a plate of caviar, and you order a steak. The waiter comes to the table with a total bill of $100, but he doesn't know how much each of you should pay. If everyone paid the same amount, the guy who ordered caviar might be happy, but what about the guy who ordered a hot dog? Enter appraisers. The food is your property. Just like these meals, some people's property is worth more than others, and it's the appraiser's job to determine how much each property is worth. That's it. So in the same way the value of these menu items would need to be determined, an appraiser places values on properties to ensure fairness and equity. After the appraiser determines the value of each property, local governing bodies will set their budgets for the coming year. They set the tax rate in order to produce the dollars needed for their budgets. The value of a property does not affect the amount of property tax needed. The sum total of all these budgets is a set number that has to be divided up among all the property owners. So even if everyone's value was cut in half by the appraisers, the tax rate would be raised in order to generate the same amount of tax revenue. The appraisers don't determine the taxes you pay. They just determine the values of properties to keep everything as fair and equitable as possible. When you notice a change in your property's appraised value, the change is the result of a never-ending quest for fairness and accuracy. Appraisers are graded on their performance, so there is a detailed system to get accurate valuations. First, the appraiser looks at similar properties that have sold, their sale prices, and the terms and conditions of each sale. That's the reason your home won't just be compared to the place next door. Studying things like square footage, age, and location helps appraisers determine how comparable another property is to yours. Even seemingly small details, like an extra bathroom or finished basement, can result in significant differences in value in two otherwise identical homes. Appraisers maintain a thorough database of real estate information to make this process as precise as possible. Changes in value are typically the result of local real estate market sales or major changes to a property. Remodel a kitchen or finish a basement, and your property's value could increase. When you see your home's appraised value, you can rest assured that the number has not been drawn out of a hat, nor generated with anything but equity and accuracy in mind. Long story short, appraisers are here to help, not trying to hinder. Their focus is accurate values, not tax collection. The only things an appraiser chases are fairness and equity, and they take great pride in it.
Thank you very much. That video is out there for everyone to see on our website. It's kind of the easy explanation of what we're doing. Today, we're going to go in more in depth on how we value commercial and residential properties that are out there. Our current population is one of the things that we keep track of, and we have grown about almost 5,600 people, which we average size at 2.56. We mean that we need at least 2,224 new housing units that are going to be coming online that we have. What is happening in our market right now? Our market is extremely tight when it comes to the supply of homes for sale, and with it being at 1.8 months' supply, according to Heartland MLS, what is happening is it is a tremendous amount of sellers' market, and they can ask, oh my, this is one of the lowest that I've ever seen is 1.8 months' supply that is out there. Next, I would like to share with you the average sale price of homes in what I consider the five major metropolitan cities. We're at about 314,000 is the average sale price, and you notice Douglas County jumped from 203 to 281. Why, I'm not really sure, but they made a tremendous amount of increase from 203 to 281. The other counties, Cedric's is about 158,000, 146 is Shawnee, and Windout County is at 117. The classification is one of the major keys that was passed in 1985, and that was to classify the property according to different fractional assessments. And those fractional assessments right now for residential is at 11 and a half, so if you have $100,000 home, it's at 11,500 is the assessed value. On commercial, $100,000 property, it is assessed value at 25,000, and that's end up what they're paying their taxes on. I'm going to be moving the slideshow now over to Jeff Ramsey.
Good afternoon. When we're talking about residential valuation, my question is, can you put your question in?
Yeah.
Better?
That's right.
Great, thank you. When we're talking about residential valuation, you know, some of the key responsibilities of the county appraiser is to discover, list, and value property. That discover process begins with the issuance of permits. We receive permits from cities, from the county municipalities, everything from new construction permits to remodels, basement finishes, room additions, and so forth. That discover and list process entails us following up on those permits and heading out to the fields to measure that home as it's being constructed, take an inventory of that home, bathrooms, bedrooms, how much basement finish is there, measuring the entire structure to make sure that we have the correct square footage on file. On existing structures, when we're going out for a remodel permit or basement finish permit, not only do we collect that new data for whatever that new addition may be, but we're also there to verify our existing data, to make sure once again that we have complete and accurate information as best as we can. As we begin to take that collected data and start looking towards our valuation process, in our market valuation system, when we're looking at sales, trying to determine the market value of real estate property residential side, we want to look and make sure that we're using arms-length, open-market sale transactions. Part of that process involves our sales validation specialist reviewing each sale that comes in. And some of the things that she's looking for, she's going to review that sales validation questionnaire that gets filled out at the time of closing. She's going to interview parties of the sale if necessary, sellers, buyers, agents involved, even verification of MLS information, trying to determine that the sales we are using are actual valid, arms-length transactions. Once we've got that pool of sales to work with, we begin our valuation modeling process. Now, in Johnson County, we've got 38 individual residential models. Models are generally defined geographically. For example, Old Leewood north of 435 is one of our models. The central portion of Prairie Village is one of our models. But we have 38 of those scattered throughout the county, and each of those models is going to contain eight to 12 variables that are going to help us determine value or what adds to the value of a property. Those variables are derived by using a statistical analysis called multiple regression analysis, which is actually a function that's embedded in our Orion system, which is our state-mandated valuation system that we use. That regression analysis then kind of determines the relationship between the characteristics of a home and how that could potentially contribute to the value of that home. And what it really does is it's giving us an indicator of what does the market say each variable is worth by comparing valid sales. This is a map showing the model areas that we have. As I indicated, we have a total of 38 models. Thirty-five of them are single-family models, and then we have two condo models and a multi-family model. The multi-family model is not shown on the map because it encompasses the entire county, and it can kind of clutter the map with dots and numbers that, like I said, they just kind of clutter things up a little bit. You have a couple of handouts available to you, one of which primarily is our sales comparison worksheet. You'll notice some boxes and numbers on there, and we'll kind of go through and talk a little bit briefly about those. When we're valuing residential property, some of the things we're looking for is what are the key drivers to value? And of course, one of the main things in residential is what's the square footage of the home? We look at total living area, which is our square footage above grade, which is indicated on your comp sheet as box number one. It's a red box just below the center of the line. Subject property being 1,000 square foot, and then we have 975, 955, 975. So the square footage above grade is a very important factor. The dollar figure I have here of 6512 is actually the contribution to value from our central Prairie Village model for an average-quality home. Some of the other things that we look at, square footage finished below grade, basement finish is going to add some value to the home, probably not as much as square footage above grade, but it will add some value. And so, once again, we're looking at how much does that square footage add? Well, if it's a high-quality finish in this model on an average home, about 4233. If it's a low-quality finish, a little under $20 a square foot. Once again, we're looking at box number one, which will show the basement type, and immediately below it, the lower-level finish. Some of the other key factors we're looking at would be number of bathrooms. A home with more bathrooms is generally going to bring a little bit more in the market. For this particular case, we're looking at about $10,700 for an additional standard three-fикture bathroom. A two-bath, you know, your standard half-bath of a lavatory and a stool would be about $7,000 addition in value for this particular model. And on your comparable sheet, box number two is going to indicate where we keep track of how many bedrooms, bathrooms, and half baths each property has. There's some other values that are a little bit harder to measure. You can't put a tape to them and count them, but we're looking at things like construction quality. What is the overall quality of that construction? Is it fairly typical for the age and the area that it was built? Or does it have a lot more to it? Does it have upgraded windows? Does it have higher ceilings? Brick or stone on the exterior, two-by-six instead of two-by-four construction, things like that? So a higher-quality home is typically going to bring a little bit of a premium in the marketplace over an average-quality home. And then also things like condition. When we're looking at condition, we have a couple of different ways that we account for it in our system. We have our physical condition, which is going to be box number three on your comparable sheet, and then we also have what we call the CDU, which stands for condition, desirability, and utility. And we use those two things in concert to try to account for both ends of the depreciation schedule. If things have been enhanced on a property, if there's been a lot of remodeling, updating, and so forth, we can account for it in those areas. Or if a home has some deferred maintenance, some very dated interior items, things like that, we can account for them there. And those factors can certainly have an impact on what the market is willing to pay for a property in Johnson County. Once we've kind of got our valuation built for our properties, what we want to do is, in looking to determine the fair market value, is we want to look and see what other sales have been doing. Not every property sells every year, so we have to look at what actually has sold to reflect the market. And so what we're going to look for is, on our comp selection process, we want to find properties that are very similar to our subject property. Square footage, style, quality, those sorts of things. But we also, whenever possible, want to try to pull comparables from the subject's own subdivision and/or neighborhood, because really those are the competing homes that a buyer may be looking for. What we have on line number four, or box number four on your comp sheet, is our comparability number. That comparability number helps us determine, are these good comparables or maybe they not-so-good comparables, depending on those other factors as far as location and similarity? Anything less than 100 is typically a very good comparable. Anything over 300, probably not so much. As you can see, on this particular instance, across line four, we have comparabilities of 51, 51, and 52, indicating that these are all very, very comparable properties to our subject. Once we start beginning to develop our values and look at our comparables, rather than looking just at the sale price of each property, we really need to make adjustments to that sale price to account for differences between the subject property and the sale property. So we take that sale price, and we make those adjustments to try to reflect in the sale price of the property the characteristics of the subject. So there's some positive and some negative adjustments that occur throughout our valuation process to arrive at that adjusted sale price. That is then the range of prices that we look at when we're actually making our valuation determination. Box number five on your comparable sheet is going to show you across on those three comparable sales what those adjusted sale prices came out to be for each of those sale This comparable sheet, we look at, we generate one of these for every residential improved property in the county. We look at those three sales. We try to make a value determination based on that. On the backside of that comparable sheet is actually photographs of those sale properties as well as of the subject property. And one of the things we, what we really strive for is we want to make sure that those comparables make sense. When we look at these, our subject property in the upper left-hand corner looks very, very similar to our sale properties. They're similar style, similar age, square footage. The only real visible difference would be the extra garage on the subject property, which would be part of the reflection of those adjusted sale prices. Now, comparable sale report and the property record card, which you also have, those are both available on our website 24/7, and it's really part of our disclosure to the public, trying to provide them as much information as possible to help them review their records, review their value, and so forth. So it's just part of our property, or our responsibility to provide what we can to the public. The property record card is really an inventory content sheet of the property. It gives us information about the structure, the size, all of the characteristics of the home, but it also gives us ownership, pardon me, ownership information, appeal information, inspection history, and so forth. Once we've got through our comparable sheets and gone through our valuation setup for this, the appraisers are then actually going to go through and make a final value determination. Now, as part of this Orion system that we worked through with the state, we have a module that helps us with our final value review. What this process is, is an appraiser will take a list of parcels, and they will load the list into this module and then begin that review process. There's a lot of different things going on on this one page, and the goal was to try to bring so many different things in to one space rather than the appraisers having to go out and look at a utility for MLS, and look at a different utility for permits, and a different utility for sale information. So we brought it all into one functional utility here. The top section of this is the list of parcels that the appraiser's going to work with for valuation. Immediately beneath that, on the left side, you've got kind of some prior-year value information from last year to this year, and it'll show you some print-sent change information on there. And then immediately under that, on the left side, you have permit information, if any, on the subject property, and sale information. Immediately to the right of those areas, you have the final value determination. You also will have, if there's prior appeal information, and if there's any sale information on the subject property, that information will be there too. And the permit, MLS, and sale information, it's just all very helpful to review as you're going through that property valuation process. The bottom third of this page is going to show, once again, the comparable properties, the subject property photo, and then just general information about those sales, the sale price, the sale date, the adjusted sale price, and so forth. And then the very bottom of this section is going to give you all of the sales from that neighborhood. So once again, the property appraiser is going to have the opportunity to look at those sales and get an idea of, what's the range of sales? High, low, what's the average? What's the average of maybe just a specific style? They can go in and kind of tweak some of those things to help refine what they're wanting to review in their valuation process. And we talked about discover and list and value. That discovery process, as I indicated, starts with permits. In the year 2016, we received 15,301 permits from throughout the county. When we look at that as compared to our total residential property parcel count, we've got 195,202 residential properties, and that 15,300 permits equates out to just under 8% of the total residential file had a permit of some kind on it in the 2016 year. The sales used for the 2017 valuation year, we used 21 months' worth of sales in our valuation process for each year. That 21-month window of sales for the 2017 valuation year accounted for 19,255 sales out of 195,200 parcels. That's just a shade under 10% of the total residential file being available for use in our market modeling process. When we're trying to determine what the market is doing in the real estate world, there is no better source than looking at sales, and we're very fortunate to have almost 10% of our file being included in that sales file. With that, I will turn it over to Scott.
Good afternoon. I am Scott Porter, and I will continue this with a little bit of talk about the commercial real estate and valuation process. To start, again, discover and list, all the permits, again, are received from various cities and the ones issued from the county to the appraiser's office, and those are distributed to the appraisers to list all the new construction for commercial properties. Occasionally, or more often than not sometimes now, the properties are complex enough, but we'll go back to the city and ask them to pull their blueprints, and our appraisers will sit down, look at the blueprints, and also they do visit every site of new construction to validate what they have on the blueprints, what they planned on building exactly there. Those property improvement data is loaded into the Orion system. Again, it's a state-mandated valuation system, and it's based on a nationally-recognized Marshall and Swift valuation services. The Orion system helps us determine the cost value, the income, and sales valuation. When we move straight into the cost approach, the Orion system costs all improvements and the land, and the system accounts for size, height, wall materials, design, and some of those features. Also, the system automatically calculates depreciation. It considers the age, the condition, the materials, and it uses quite a number of internal data charts for age life, the depreciation factor rate that will be applied. The final cost equals the replacement cost new that we've listed, less the depreciation calculated, plus the land valuation. The income approach has four primary components: the rent, the vacancy, expenses, and the capitalization rate. The data for this is collected, and we'll use surveys, publications, contracted studies, listings, and a host of other sources to collect this information. The rent and expense data is compiled, loaded to spreadsheets, and statistical analysis is performed on these to give us ranges for rents and expenses for particular property types. The vacancy data is gathered through publications or actual field visits, will drive certain areas of retail to see exactly what the vacancy is at the time that we visit. Capitalization rates are contracted in a study done external of our county, and we also do some internal investigations for capitalization rate. If we take a closer look at the next slide here, the commercial capitalization rate, in short, it would be any rate used to convert an estimated income into a market value, or the ratio of net operating income to value. The triangle is really a component of, an easy way to look at the formula, income divided by value would give you a rate. Income divided by rate would give you a value. If you look to the left of that, you'll see a box with the written-out formulas. Really, our contractor uses the bottom formula, where he establishes valid sales and the income that the owner is generating from that property, and divides those out to get a rate. We, in turn, take those rates that have been generated, estimate an income that the owner would have, and apply that rate to generate a full value for the property. As far as the sales approach, every commercial sale is gone through in the commercial department, and we do call on either the seller or the buyer to validate the sale and make sure it's arms-length and open-market, that it has not been under duress or some other avenue of, you know, not being quite open-market. The database of valid sales is analyzed and provides us really a range of property values for particular property types. We can estimate a range from the sales, what we expect per square foot for a single-tenant retail, what is the per-square-foot value for convenience stores, and so forth. The actual sales approach for commercial, we can't apply that as easily as the residential with sale comps. It's just not, there's too many variables and varieties of property characteristics. However, through Johnson County's innovation, we have allowed sales comparison approach on properties with very uniform characteristics, and I'm pleased to say that we have 465 office condominiums and 125 garage condos, or what they refer to as man caves, now use the sales comparison approach. So we are one of the few jurisdictions in the United States that uses a sales comparison approach for commercial properties, at least for some of them. In the value estimates and quality control, in the final finality, we have 15,000 commercial properties that have a value estimate, and we could have multiple estimates for those. We may have a cost and income for one property, or a cost and a sales comparison approach for another. So we spend a great deal of time with examining which might be the best fit for applying the valuation approach we use. There is approximately actually 50 quality control reports, and we use those as an internal check. We'll use those prior to selecting the final value, and after the final value has been selected to go through. They really give us a chance to look at the percent of changes, the uniformity, and the correctness of the data and the values. QC reports, like I said, are both before and after selecting the final value. The requirements and compliance. Market value is set annually as of January 1st every single year. The statutes require us to notify the owner of the appraised value on March 1st. I'm pleased to say that the commercial department has been able to issue notice of value two weeks early for the last number of years. The value range by statute must be between 90 and 110% of market value. This is in the broadest sense of compliance, and we are consistently within that range. If you take a look at the next slide, we have apartments and their construction. We have built and listed more than 7,000, almost 7,400 apartments since 2010. I've been asked a number of times, when will that top out? What's the limit? And if you want to know what I've investigated, occupancy is still increasing, rents are still increasing, and absorption is outpacing the construction of apartments, both in Johnson County and in the metro, Kansas City metro area. So I'm not sure. I suspect maybe we might be seeing the top, but I don't know. I can't say for sure. If we look at industrial, the evolution of our industrial logistics park in Kansas City, we have over 1,600 acres that are capable of handling 17 million square feet of buildings. Nearly 3 million square feet will have direct rail access. And if you look at the chart, we've, I know we've had at least three new buildings for more than a million square feet, and we probably are still erecting and picking up the [inaudible]. more than a million square feet, and we probably are still erecting and picking up some more before the year's end. All of the logistic park properties are on industrial revenue bonds. And with that, I would like to turn it over to our tax abatement administrator to speak more on those benefits.
Good afternoon. I'm Shayna Kazner, the tax abatement administrator. I work with the departments in the office, and after they've been valued, if there's an abatement or exemption placed on the property, I go ahead and I work with the city and the state and other property owners to place these exemptions and abatements. The first ones we'll talk about are the industrial revenue bonds and economic development bonds. These are bonds that are issued on property to either purchase, construct, and/or renovate the property improvements. They can be on building and land. They last about 10, they last up to 10 years. The property itself is considered exempt through those 10 years, and then there's a payment in lieu of taxes made on the property every year that is, or what is otherwise known as a pilot payment, and that's typically either a percentage or dollar amount of what the tax would be if the property were not exempt. In 2017, we have about, a portion of the property that's exempt, about 1.1 billion in appraised value, and we have about 284 million in assessed value. I took the 2016 mill levy and estimated for the 2017 pilot payments, we're looking at about $19 million. We have 93 current active bonds in the county on 105 parcels, active in nine cities throughout the county, including county property. The next piece we'll talk about is tax increment financing. Most people know as TIF. It's a public financing method containing commercial and sometimes residential property. The taxes are paid in full, and then there's two elements to this. The first piece is a base valuation. This value is placed when the district is passed and through an ordinance, and then there's the increment value, which is used to distribute the taxes to a special fund to pay for the development. They, each TIF district, there's TIF districts and there's TIF projects. There's projects within the district, there can be multiple projects or just one project. In 2017, we have about $345 million in base value, and we have about $81 million in assessed. The incremental value that is used for the bonds or the, the development is $1 billion in appraised and 189 million in assessed. Right now in Johnson County, we have 36 active districts, we have 59 projects, and we have about 1,300 parcels that are affected by this within 10 cities in our county. The next one is the neighborhood revitalization program. I like to refer to this as a miniature TIF. The reason for this is because it's usually a single parcel. It's used for small business and residential. There's still an increment that is used off of a base value, but it's a one-time increment, and it does not increase through the 10 years that the abatement is applied. The overall assessed value base is 3 million right now in 2017, and the overall increment is approximately 6.2 million. There are six programs currently active in the county affecting about 136 parcels within five cities. The last piece is our exempt property. This is falls under the statute 79201 and the subsections therein. There's about $5.9 billion worth of appraised property that's exempt on the tax roll. About 3,800 of these properties are right-of-way parcels, otherwise known as ROW. There's a total of 8,000 properties within the county that are either outside of the ROW, I'm sorry, and property that's owned or used by either educational, which is our schools, our religious purpose like churches. We have our city, county, state, and Department of Transportation properties. We have hospital-owned adult care facilities and childcare facilities that owned, and our charitable organizations and nonprofits, if they fully own the property and use it for that purpose under the 501(c)(3) status, they're typically considered exempt. With that, I will pass it on to Paul.
Thank you very much. As you can see, the duties of the county appraiser is to discover, list, and value, and defend the values in a uniform and an equal way. The appraisal history, in 1985, the citizens of the state of Kansas decided to change the method that we were using. I think the last reappraisal was in 1967, and they developed a classification system. They also developed and purchased a CAMA system, computer system, mass appraisal system, and that was state mandated, and the state mandated the replacement of that, which is our Orion system that we use today, and adoption of the majority of laws governing the appraisal process. Judge Bullock then entered in and was concerned about the uniformity and accuracy of the reappraisal, and some laws and procedure changes were done. A sales ratio study was completed, and improved appraisal guidelines and more rigid appraisal qualifications were established, which is now what we call the registered mass appraisal program that is with the state. The outcomes, we pushed Kansas nationally in the appraisal and assessment tools, established laws for uniformity, acceptable levels of uniform and accurate values, and recognition of failure would likely result in another lawsuit if that would happen. Today, we have about $33.156 billion in assessed value that generates about $4.5 billion in revenue per year. Property taxes is the largest single source of revenue for Kansas. You can see that in the recession period, we went from $31 billion down to $29.4, and then back up to 33 for 2016. For all properties, Johnson County represents about 22.8% of the state's all properties that are in aborum tax. If you look at just the residential, we're over 30% of the value, and commercially, we're over 30, approximately 35% of the value of the state when you parcel out the differences. Some of the two major things is we have agriculture value throughout the state, and the second one is we have a Wolf Creek power plant that is considered a public utility down in Coffee County.
Coffee County.
Yeah, Coffee County. The appraisal timeline, again, our values are as of January 1st. We, we, as, the commercial values go out about two weeks early, and then the mass mailing of the rest of the properties are done by March 1st, on or before. We have until March, May 15th to hear them. May 20th, our results have to be mailed, and then now we have to certify our values to RTA office on June 1st, and the TIF values have to be certified by July 1st. David Harper is our property evaluation division director, and again, to minister and supervise a statewide program for the state, and he also publishes some guidelines and directives. Helped general supervision to the end, all assessments must be just and uniform and at its true full cash value. To investigate the working methods of county and district appraisers in the assessment of all properties, and if we need to, we can ask for an extension of any statutory guideline. PBD oversight really is what they call substantial compliance, and this came out in 1993, and it has two parts to it. It has a procedural compliance, do we give timely notice of value, notification of appeal rights, routine inspections are completed, and a timely certification of the values need to be done. That's the procedural side. Are we meeting the statute? The other side is statistical. Are we meeting the sales ratio study that is needed, and the overall median ratio and the uniformity is based upon coefficient of dispersion? And if you go to the next slide, the Johnson County compliance results, are we just from 2012 to 2016? In 2015, you may notice that we were at 80% on statutory. March 1st ended up on a Sunday. We thought we could mail on Monday? No, no, no. We had to mail before March 1st on Sunday. Typically, if it falls on a Sunday, you have until Monday to do the operation. We thought that was true. It says on or before. Therefore, we are sure that we're in compliance. That's the only reason why we had that statutory issue that one particular year. County appraisers duty, we're subject to many laws imposing the duties and responsibilities to ensure that we have values that are equal and uniform. The county commissioners and the county appraisers must assure that all staff is qualified. We have probably the highest grouping that have retained and become registered mass appraisers for the state of Kansas. Many of our staff have left us to go into the fee appraisal review work, as well as become county appraisers in other areas. So my duties, list and appraise annually. Now we can view property once every six years digitally. We'll show you a little bit of illustration of how that has really helped us. As I know, in the past, we always had to drive by the property, and there was a flashing light on the house that said, "I'm worth $105,000." And there's another house that says, "I'm worth $95,000." Actually, now with that module that Jeff was brought up about how we value the property is really the proper way, in my opinion, to be able to do that. We also have to manage the appeal process. There's basically three now. We have the spring equalization appeals, the notice of appraised value appeals. We have the payment under protest, first half and second half, and then we have a supplemental appeal process. We had three that went through that process this past year. Then we can march over to district court, and very rarely do we end up in district court at all. I'm now going to turn it over to Jeff Holzappel.
Thank you, Paul. Once again, the appeal options for the taxpayers, the first option is an informal equalization appeal. After, after the notice of values are sent, the second option is a first or second-half payment under protest hearing, and the third option is a supplemental appeal after the informal results are mailed. Here, we're looking at an appeal flow chart. So we send out the notices of value. We can have an informal hearing, they can go on to the small claims hearing, or they can be, go on to the Board of Tax Appeals. Just to, should be noted that all residential need to go through the small claims, and commercial under 3 million may choose to go to small claims, and properties devoted to agriculture are excluded from going to small claims. And then appeals beyond BODA are infrequent, but can go to district court, Court of Tax Appeals, and the Supreme Court. Looking at the history, a percentage adjusted for residential and commercial informal appeals, here that we can see for 2017, the number adjusted for residential was about 50% and 26% for commercial. Next slide, it's kind of showing us the history of the informal hearings that we do by phone for residential and commercial. For 2017, residential was about 60% of our appeals were by phone, and for commercial, they were slightly below 20%. This is showing just some history of the payment under protest hearings, and really probably the big thing here, as you can see that for both resident and commercial, the trend has been down. History for the Board of Tax Appeals. I know we have a lot of colors there and all that, but I guess the big thing is to really note is that for 2017, you can see both small claims and the BODA hearings for residential and commercial are down from prior years. For our in-person residential informal appeals, we actually have a survey that we make available to the taxpayers as they come in to fill out, if they so choose. One of the questions that we asked is how professional and polite the appraiser they met was, how polite that appraiser was. For 2017, 97 of them rated, 97% rated them good or excellent. Another question asked, if the appraiser was able to explain the appraisal process. And for 2017, 91% replied yes. One last question, they asked, they were asked to rate the overall service from the appraiser's office. For 2017, 91% rated it good or excellent.
Potential appraisal challenges that we see in the future litigation is still out there, and there's a, called Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice. Standard 6 is what is for mass appraisers, and as appraisal, standard 1 and standard 2 are for those that are in fee appraisal. Another potential challenge is availability of income and expense information that we receive. The big issues that we see in the very near future is what we call the dark store theory, and this is where suggests that occupied big boxes should be valued as if vacant and available for sale or rent to a future hypothetical user rather than in the current use, which is often a functioning occupied store. This here is probably the one that has swept the nation as far as in the litigation world, and what is the proper method and for that. The IWA, there were six of us that were a part of a group that worked on the commercial big-box retail study, a guide to market-based valuation for the dark store issues and theories that are out there. That is available. We published the IWA website for that particular study that was done. We currently have now two reappraisal advisory committees. Our first committee is the commercial. We have about 25 individuals on that, and those are listed on the, on the prop, on the slides. And then on the residential, we started that in August of 31st of this year. Susan Bowers has always been on a, on a reappraisal advisory committee, and so I reached out to her to give us names and individuals that they thought would be good to have that. And we have people, a mixture of those that are in the lending industry, those that are fee appraisers, as well as those that are active in the marketplace that is there. We met on August 31st. They gave us some guidelines, some thoughts. We've taken those back, and one of those that came out was that we need to be active in the, hopefully, the city publications talking about their market trends that we see within their individual cities that they publish. We're working on a 250-word or less, talking about the county appraisal, what we see in your particular cities as far as market trends that are out there. I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff.
Thanks, Paul. Just a couple appraisal advancements that we are currently using in the office. Oblique photography has been adopted as an alternative to doing our, to doing onsite inspections, and this technology is great because it gives that appraiser the ability to review and measure all four sides of a property sitting at their desk. Another one of those is that we receive new aerial photos about every two years, so we will take our Apex sketch that is in our Orion system, and we will lay that over the top of that new aerial to see if there's been any differences, if something's been added, and as you can see right here, we definitely have to do a more review on this property. Looking at the next one, this is what we like to see. It's done perfectly, and we can move on. Personal property, just a couple things here. All commercial personal property that was acquired after July 1 of 2006 is exempt. Assessed value has decreased from 491 million in '06 to 95 million in '16. This value is an 81% decrease. The 95.2 million represents the remaining taxable value prior to the July '06 exemption. And one other big thing in personal property is with our watercraft, the assessment rate has changed. In 2013, it was 30%, and then for 2016, it was 5. Over the last five years, this would represent an 83% decrease.
That was because of state action.
Yes.
I play more on my golf cart than I do on my boat now. So that's out there. Like to, real, real quick, where's your piece of the pie? And we're talking about... And we're talking about what has happened since 1985. 1989 was the first reappraisal. 1992, we amended the classification and moved, and we'll talk about that. 2006, we had personal property exempted, and then 2014 to present. So let's go to the 1988. This is prior to reappraisal, and I'd like for you to look at three boxes. The blue box represents 47% of the assessed value for the county was residential. 20% was commercial, and 23% was personal property. See those three pies? After reappraisal, what happened? Residential went from 47 to 53%. Commercial's carrying 33% now. And personal property dropped to 6%. The following year, we had that '92 constitutional amendment, improved residential down to 11 and a half, and used commercial from 30 to 25. In 1993, then what happened to the shift? After the residential remained around 53, commercial reigned at 30, and personal property jumped up to 9%. In 2006, we already talked about personal property after July 1 of 2006 would no longer be taxable. So what happened in 2008? 2008, you notice that the residential now makes up 61%. Commercial's 30. Personal property is now 5%. If you go to the next slide, where are we currently? Currently, the assessed value base for Johnson County is 64% is carried by the residential, 31% is carried by the commercial, and 1% now is carried by personal property. Two things that we wanted to show as we're wrapping up. The market value for 2016 and 2017 on residential and commercial. You notice that the market value is around $51 billion, and now it's $55 billion on residential. Commercial's at 11 and went to about 12.3. However, if you look at the assessed value, that's really where the commercial picks up a bigger share of the pie. They went from 5.8 on residential to 6.3, however, 2.9 to 3. So now they're representing almost a third. Finally, as we stated, we're trying to be open and transparent as possible with our constituents. And so on the real and commercial property, all of our valuation documents, the cost, the sketch, the property record card, and nearby addresses for residential and commercial are out there. The sales comparable sheets are available on the subject property on the website. And the income valuation workups are also available on the website. We have tried to be open and honest as well as transparent to our constituents. And they can receive these 24/7 anytime they would like unless we obviously have a crash or something on our website. But that's where I would like to end, and we're open for questions.
Well, Paul, lots of, lots of detail. Appreciate it. I don't know how much of this you could put up on your website without a lot of detailed explanation. But I think some of this data that you presented to us today, if it's not there, might be, might be appropriate and informative to, to have that out there also. You know, one question that some of us, or all of us here on the diocese get, public has the impression sometimes that we are the ones that make these judgments about appraised value. And then the other idea that's just false is that somehow the commission says, "We need more money," so you increase values. Could you speak to both of those?
I'll speak to the latter one first. I've already forgot the first one. But the latter one is, I have never had any pressure from the commissioners. And I've been here since 1992. I've never had a pressure to say, "We need to increase values for tax purposes." It would never happen. I wouldn't allow it to happen. That is not my, the way I operate.
Well, and it doesn't-
And we can prove in the recession period where we actually were lowering values on residential and commercial during that period of time. So I think I've, hopefully have answered the last one. The second, first question you had, sir?
I may have forgotten what it was. Really, the secretary has a record of that, but-
We can provide, yes, sir.
Yeah. Right.
The county sets the value, the appraiser sets the value for the county. And we're bound by many documents and directives and administration oversight by the state on how we do that.
Well, I know, I know that you, there are specific statutes that your office must follow, and you do follow based upon the PVD's, you know, evaluation of your, of your operation. I thought it was interesting that I recall back in the eighties, a city I used to be associated with, we watched very carefully that residential and commercial valuations were 50/50 almost. And so, but since that time, with everything that's happened at the state, the constitutional amendment, the residential property is now carrying a much larger share of the tax load vis-à-vis the other properties. And part of that is because, as you indicated, some personal properties have been removed or substantially reduced, which I think is, is a point to remember. There was a article in the, in the Star the last couple of days about property valuations of the plaza. And to me, the crux of the issue was, I have a, we're supposed to use sale prices or market prices. And so I have a commercial property that, that is sold for $1 million. And then I come in and ask for an appeal that that's really not the value of that commercial property. Does that, does that occur? It obviously occurred in the case of the plaza when it went down like 30% from what the, what the market price was.
I'm not an expert on Jackson County, but I will say this. What I understand is that they value one-third of the county every other year. So it's six years before they actually go through. And then when a property sells, they have what they call uniformity. Basically, how am I compared to everyone else that sold? And if they were, because they have a delay revaluation process, then they have to be set the same rate or same level as the other ones.
Well, okay, but let me ask you this, particularly to Johnson County. If I've got a, if I've got a property that I sold for $1 million, what's, what's the rationale for me to say, "No, no, it's really not worth what I paid for it. It's worth something less"? Does that happen?
Of course. It always happens. You know, we, we have property owners that say that there's intangible value or there's some other issue that's there. It may be that it's sold, but immediately a tenant walked out, then it should be a reduced value because the tenant is gone.
The tenant, right.
And therefore, we would have a reduction in that value off. If it's sold for $100,000, it may be lower than that based upon if a major tenant walked out.
Okay. But other, other than those kinds of circumstances-
We should be close to market value.
Yeah. One last question that I have and has to do with the dark stores. Understand what's happening around the country. But if that were to be the standard adopted in the state of Kansas, it seems to me like there would be another big shift to residential properties as far as the amount of property taxes paid. Am I correct in that?
I believe you are. And then I think the problem with this is that there's a hypothetical condition that the fee appraiser has to make, saying that it's not occupied, but it actually is occupied. There's a hypothetical condition that they have to do. So let's take it to the extreme. If they adopt that hypothetical condition that can be assumed, then I would have to assume every commercial property is vacant. And then I would also have to assume every residential property is vacant. So the county no longer has 600,000 people living here. Now how do you value the county? And I don't think that was envisioned at all by anyone as far as a method in which to value property for ever on tax purposes.
Okay. Mr. Allen.
Just to do a follow-up on that, currently, we're not having a problem at this time on the big box stores.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
But we're in litigation.
Okay. And then I guess maybe trying to look at it different, are any of those stores built with any type of, any bonding at all? I know they're normally not. You know, if they build a store and finance it for $10 million, then come back and say it's worth $4 million or $3 million or whatever. We don't get involved in that?
No.
And then the other thing I noticed, one of the things you use is the actual replacement cost on commercial buildings. Being a former insurance person, do we have access to what they actually have that insured for? So if it's only worth $4 million, are they insured for $10 million?
No, we do not.
I mean, is that-
The Marshall and Swift valuation service is also owns BEC, which was the costing service for the insurance industry. Now it's all Marshall and Swift, I believe. That's the reason why when the Orion system was bid out, we said it had to have a nationally costing service in it. And that Marshall and Swift is the tool that we use.
And that something's changed more than likely. It would be state by state if they changed that. And unfortunately, Johnson County would probably by far had the biggest impact statewide.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jason.
Paul, can we get a slide? I think it's 53. It's the one on the informal hearings.
Yes.
So the numbers have greatly increased over the last, it looks like the last four years there. But I noticed that the percentage adjusted are on the, right around half the people that come in. Do we have a plan to kind of lower that? I mean, that seems like a really high number to me that half the people that come in for an adjustment are getting.
You're talking about the, for residential?
Yes, I'm sorry, the top part, yeah.
Residential. If you notice that we had a spike from, values went up dramatically on residential for this past year from 16 to 17. Again, that goes back to the amount of supply that we have, and now we're in a, an accelerous market, not a normal market. The issue on this particular area is-
These are the phone hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got my, yeah, phone, slide 54 is phones. 53, I think, is the one you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I meant 53.
Right. That number, you notice it's almost always around, it fluctuates around 50%?
Yeah.
That means, one, it seems to me, we don't know the, we do not do interior inspections. So that's the number one issue that we have. The second is, we are listening to the people that come in and have dated, has not been updated to modern standards or anything like that. And we take that into account in the condition, desirability, and utility, and the physical condition of the property. That, I don't know how to get around that. That number has probably been that way for, since '95, as far as 50% of the people. You do want us to be able to have an avenue for the people to come in with an informal discussion and being able to take their evidence and being able to adjust it.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, those adjustments may not be much.
Sure.
But we do want to say that we listen to the people that come, walk through the door.
Oh, absolutely. And I totally 100% agree with that. I just, I look at this number and I think, you know, what if this number's 10,000? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know.
If the, you know, that number seems to be increasing. So eventually, we get to that point where, what if it's 100,000 of our residents that are-
We've never had, the most we've ever had-
Yeah.
Is 15,000 back in the early nineties. When you have the strong residential market that we have, and it is very, very strong, you being, Commissioner Brown being a builder, it is as strong as I've seen and is, that's the reason why we created the residential advisory committee. What do we do with this information where people are saying, "I will buy the home with no inspections"? No inspections, not even termites. And their people are doing that so they can be able to buy. Or they have five offers and the home has been on the market 20 hours.
Yeah, I-
I don't know.
I tell you, we're in a really strong market. I just, if I'm a, if I'm a citizen at home right now looking at this presentation, and I know that half the people that come in are getting some kind of adjustment in their evaluation, you know, what's, what, as an average citizen, what's my, I mean, that's a dice roll I think I'm willing to make, you know, if half the people are, so I guess I'm just-
I wish, I don't ever want to have a policy that we have to, some states require the county appraiser to be in, inside the house. 60% of the homes have to be viewed inside before you can do a revaluation. Those who have staggered revaluation process. That would be a really cost ineffective for us to be able to do that. Having the hearing process is the best to be able to have. The citizens tell us, and most of those, if you notice, 60% of now are phone traffic-
Yeah.
Which is, which is what we want, is to be able to handle it at their convenience over the phone. They either email or send us, fax in the information that we need to make those adjustments.
All right. It makes, yeah, excuse me, go ahead, Jason.
Oh, sorry, I just, I want to go to the, to that residential advisory committee. I knew we had talked about that, and I didn't know we'd actually set one up. But it just seems like, wouldn't it be in our best interest to have some actual citizens who aren't connected to the, to the real estate?
Industry.
Industry? I mean-
We'd be happy to. All we have to do is have the name and, and we can add them. We were trying to get it up and running. The reappraisal advisory committee is appointed really by the county appraiser. And if you have individuals that you think ought to serve on it, we'll be happy to put them on.
Okay. I just look at this, you know, it's, I mean, there is a financial tie-in with some of these people to having higher commercial, you know, rates. It's, it's good for a realtor to have, and I'm not saying there's any kind of malfeasance. Don't get me wrong on that. I just-
Arms length.
What?
Arms length.
Yeah, I just think it'd be good if we had some average.
If you would like to submit some names, we'll be more than happy to put them on. Our next meeting will be probably in November before we set our, we're in, before we set our values for residential. And be happy to add them to our list and if they're willing to serve.
Great, thank you. Mr. H, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Paul, I wanted to commend you and your team for a very thorough and thoughtful presentation. You've offered up a lot of information, and my brain is just spinning a thousand miles an hour, but unfortunately, we don't have the time to cool it down. So I'll just, I'll just ask one question, and it's a core question for me. You had one slide that showed the assessed value, how it had peaked in, I think, about 2008, and then went down a couple, a couple years. And that, I mean, that's, that's a reality. I'd like some feedback from you on how you, how you respond to, or how you would suggest we respond to people that say, "Well, the assessed value was going up, and so I was paying taxes at a higher rate, but then when I actually sold my house, it was at a lower rate. So you were taxing me for something that I got no value out of, so give me my, give me my money back." So how do we respond to that? Or how would you respond to that?
We value property as of January 1st. We can, our revaluation report that we publish annually has what has happened to the residential and commercial valuation and overall what has happened to the county overall. More than likely, if they have sold their property, right?
I'm talking about during the dip.
During the dip.
Yeah.
Our values on residential and commercial dropped.
Right.
And now the values have been climbing up since about 2010 or '11 on residential.
Well, but as I understand the question, if, if values topped out in '08-
And you're paying taxes on it.
And you've got a January 1 date, and I sell my property on December 30th of '08, the market has continued to go down, and it's going to be different than what it was on January 1. Maybe, maybe that's the answer if I'm understanding your question.
No, 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 the question is, you pay taxes on, based on the assessed value. So you're paying here, I'll just say, the $31. You were paying taxes then, but you actually sold your house when it was at 29.4, 4.5. Well, you were paying taxes on something that you didn't realize any value on that.
That, the value was declining is what you're, if I understand your question.
Right, because you're paying taxes.
The value is declining.
You were paying taxes on- You were paying taxes on a higher amount.
My value point is here, even though the market continues down.
Right.
But that is by statute that I have to set the value as of January first.
So the responses-
Even though the market continues to slide down.
So it's a, it's a function of state, state law? We have no control over it?
The second is, when we revalue the following year, then our value should be lower.
Right, no, I get that, but it's the taxes paid, you know?
Right, I understand, but the taxes are all based upon January first. Whatever is built on the tax, whatever property condition is as of January first, so if it's a partially completed house, on January first, we can only value it at fifty percent, let's say fifty percent of the construction. And then they get to live in it for the remainder of that year, and they're taxed on it fifty percent.
Yeah.
So, but that's, the, it's all based upon statute of January first.
One follow-on, and this may be outside of your pay grade, but, uh, in two thousand eight, there, this change was due in part, I think, to a bubble in housing prices. Well, it looks like we are in a bigger bubble now, so what are, what are you seeing, or you have any sense of, this is, we're going to continue on our merry way for an indefinite period, or, I mean?
If I, if I had the crystal ball here-
We'd all be in the-
We would not, I would not be the county appraiser, if I could predict that.
All right.
I could tell you that, but, but really what we have is, the, one of the reasons why we created this Residential Advisory Committee, because we are very concerned that we have gone on a long ride up, and right now, if you go back to, the population's still increasing, and our housing stock is down here, we have a total imbalance.
Yeah, well-
And, and hopefully, the apartments that are being built can help on that supply side of housing stock, but it has not cooled down. The values, anything under four hundred thousand and below are just going through the roof.
Well, but back to my original question, I am now paying taxes on the thirty-three dollars in one-five-six, and if the bubble does burst, and I sell my house when the bubble is flattened out, then I will be paying taxes on something that I get no value out of.
Right, contact your representative who was here this morning.
I think they'll be back, but thank you.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, a couple of things. Jennifer, if you could take us to slide twenty-seven while you're looking at that, I'd just like to draw the board's attention that we have with us today, Lou Newman from Walmart Corporation. Uh, just wanted to announce and let everyone know, it was, this was, whole discussion was important enough for him to cut, take time out and come and be with us, so I'm, I'm glad that he's here. Um, the, um, on slide twenty-seven, the, there was the, the value range must be ninety to a hundred and twen, ten percent of market. Where is the must? Is that statute?
Statute.
Okay. All right.
And, I believe that is also a, an agreed order with Judge Bullock.
Okay. If we can flip to slide thirty-nine, I have a question there. It says, um, I wrote it down quickly, and I'd like to just make sure I read it. No, I must have written down. Something about recognize failure. You, you read that out loud. It was on a slide. I've written down thirty-nine, but it's obviously not on that slide. I just wanted to understand what that meant. I got my glasses at Walmart, I'm going to need to go back.
This is during the Judge Bullock period, when he was signing off, and if it didn't get, he was going to order another massive reappraisal, and so recognition failure would likely result in another lawsuit. That, that's the time period that we're talking about, back in the nineties. Ninety-two to ninety-nine, um, yeah, hopefully I got those, that's a general range, in the nineties, he had took control of basically the revaluation and the administration from the state.
Okay.
Or had come, yeah.
Were you still in high school? Okay. Um, a, a, just a couple of other quick comments. There is legal staff that you have, and that person files things and, and defends the county, the Board of County Commissioners. I've never met that person, and I don't have a clue what that person does. So from your perspective and from Legal Department's perspective, I'd like to know who that is, and I'd like to understand what they do, who they are and what they do. I just, I don't know them.
Okay. They work for the Legal Department.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the person is Catherine Myers. Uh, she represents the county and defends our positions at the State Board of Tax Appeals, and has been doing that for, she used to work for the Board of Tax Appeals, and then came here. She's been here-
Ten, fourteen years, fifteen?
Seventeen.
I'm sorry, seventeen or eighteen years.
Okay.
And, um, so that's the person that defends, uh, does all the legal proceedings, uh, does all the paperwork between, uh, when we come to a settlement, she has to sign off. We give her the numbers, the data, and the two attorneys then have to sign off, and then it's presented in front of the Board of Tax Appeals.
Okay. The, so from that, that perspective, and, and this may be a nuance, maybe just splitting hairs, but the, the paperwork that I've seen said that she's representing the Board of County Commissioners. I understand in, in de facto, she's representing the entire county, but I'm a member of the Board of County Commissioners, and I've never met her, so, um, I would like to arrange that meeting. Thank you. Um, and then I, Chairman, I would like to ask that, um, at some point, we could put together, uh, a, a specific to commercial real estate, the opportunity for, uh, members of our corporate community that are also taxpayers, uh, to have the opportunity in a venue to come before us and, uh, explain their position, where they may not agree with the appraiser or the appraiser's office, such that in multiple years, they've, they fight the, the tax, the, the, the levy, their tax bill, it is appealed, it is overturned at Kansas Court of Tax Appeals, and then the next year, it comes back at higher than the amount that they appealed. They would like a venue, and I, I, I would like to have them have that venue, to air their grievances about that, that over and over, they, they continue to bang their head against that wall. So I would, I, just at, for future discussion-
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we set up a meeting with our legislative delegation, because as I understand, that is a process that, uh, is outlined, and we do not have the ability to change that process.
Okay.
So they're welcome to speak to us, but we don't have the ability to change that process. Am I, am I correct or not, Paul?
There have been cases that, um, by the time we get to the area of decision, um, that may be a fifteen-year, a fifteen, uh, twenty-fifteen case, and we resolve it, let's say for fifteen and sixteen and seventeen, then the value goes up, because more, generally the market continues to go up right now for commercial as well, or the, yeah. And so that could be some of the issues that I, I don't know. I would like to be able to speak to those gentlemen or ladies that, uh, would like to speak. Yeah, my office is always open.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. That's what I needed, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, you know, one last comment from me. Uh, I think, uh, as I understand the dark stores theory, uh, that's one of the biggest risks that residential property owners face, uh, if in fact, that theory should be pursued at the state level. So I would like to, uh, continue to be informed of what's happening in that area, uh, and it just, uh, it's a, uh, it's a theory that, uh, when you take it apart, just does not make sense. And, uh, so I think we need to keep our property, uh, taxpayers, our residential taxpayers, informed of, uh, whatever progress is or is not made in that theory.
Okay. Uh, we'll see that you get a list of those that we think are the current active dark store, as well as any potential new ones, and where they are in the litigation process, we'll develop a report for you.
All right. Any other questions?
We, we just got our legislative platform today, but does that dark store deserve to be on the legislative platform?
It's in it.
It is included, right.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's not gonna-
Okay, well, a lot of information, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We are adjourned, and, uh, our audit committee meeting will, uh, get underway. Thank you.
Thank you very much.